Good evening and welcome to tonight's special board meeting here at Superior High School in the Performing Arts Center. Go call please.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Nick Olson.
Here.
I'm here. Nick Schumacher.
Here.
Diana Smith.
Here.
President Olson.
Here. We have met compliance with official notification. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. And is considered to be a public community meeting. There is time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment sign up sheet. Prior to the start of the meeting, the board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes length. And we have one person signed up. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board this evening? Thank you. So we'll open the session with public comments. Nicole Moon. Oh, Moon. How could I?
I'm not even speaking. I'm speaking for my husband tonight, so. Um, so I'm reading this on behalf of my husband Willie Moon, a teacher at the Superior High School who is currently at basketball trials for the S H S boys program, just down the hall. So. Five thirty, so I said I would speak on his behalf. So this is from him. He says this is an education. I am now a 2000 teacher with our elementary schools, the middle school and high school. Each of these schools has its own culture and field within the learning community. Many of these elementary communities are going to experience large changes throughout the year, welcoming new students and families and sending them back to others. The task of allowing the elementary boundaries to better utilize their space while the least amount of things to talk about and having to keep neighborhoods together is nearly impossible. However, there was a small change that I need to do to ease the memory of the parents that allow our community to remain intact. I first of all to keep the direct road loss and the direct incidents affected by the struggles to move within the four corners elementary school boundary. With the heartbreaking decision to close like Superior Elementary School at the conclusion of the academic year, it will be one of the whole school remaining in the spirit. The rural schools have a special type of community and feel that cannot be replicated around the schools. My family moved into the country for many reasons and they have in the four corners elementary boundary which allows us to be part of the rural school community to live in for our family. As the family directly affected by the proposed changes, we hope that I will make the decision to make the small change to allow the four corners community to learn. With all of its matters and all of those families coming to the Superior Elementary. If you hear your time in consideration, Willie Moon.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, the board will now move into discussions, further discussions on the district boundary options.
Open for more public comment, but.
So we'd need an action item to open.
I think you can, you can engage in discussion, but if you, when you make a decision, you'll make, need to make a motion for what that would look like.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to start, um, last Monday night, remember you were here. And others now, we have others that are here tonight. So I think that what we had was, um, perhaps one of the, um, richest conversations that we've been allowed to have as a, as a group, a whole group and stuff, because we don't get the chance, as I mentioned last week, to sit with more than three people and, and to have conversation. So the information, the insight that has been shared by, by Amy, by David, um, the David C, the information that Casey's put together and, and Anne, all you've done for the board thus far, I just want to acknowledge that. It was very nice having an open, honest discussion about the boundaries. I think people understand the, the situation we are in. I want to also commend the work of the Oversight Committee. It had to be a daunting task for all of you to put the information, get the information that you needed, put the information into the program that Cooperative Strategies, um, uh, their tool that allowed boundaries to be developed and and without you and without your expertise and knowledge, our decision probably would have been harder. So thank you very much to that committee for the work that, that you did. We've discussed a little bit last week, um, and it, and when we left, I, I shared that I would want each one of you to say something tonight, um, to start the discussion and stuff. We, we had a number of good discussions. Um, the Four Corners area is one of the areas of discussion that I think that we're looking at. We as a group winnowed down to option one and option three. I did make some mention that, you know, at some point, you know, if you really thought over the week that option two or option four was better, you know, to make sure that you said something about it, but it seemed like we had come to some consensus to stay with options one and three. So with that, um, I'd like to open it back up to all of you, um, insight from last week, and then perhaps some points that you have for this week. At the end of this meeting, we will vote on the new boundaries.
Well, I'm not going to talk as much as Steve did there. He does a great job for the rest of us, but, um, I, I will say again, thank you for the people that did put these maps together. Thank you for the work that you've done. Um, it's appreciated. Not an easy choice to make. Uh, I've said, I said last week that my goal was to have the least amount of fact on the least amount of schools and the least amount of students. And I'm going to apologize, Amy and Dave, already, but I'm, I'm going to sit here and be an advocate for the Four Corner School. Um, and for those two sections that we can make an impact on tonight, um, without, um, really destroying the map too much, I guess, to say, to say the least. Um, between options one and options three, putting those thirteen or eight kids, whatever it is, back at Four Corners. But then make it so we only have two schools that are affected by losing students. I mean, granted, every, 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 uh, school is gaining students, but only two schools be, will be losing students at that point. Um, I, I don't think that's a unreasonable ask. Those students are spread out among several grades, um, and I think the school can handle it. I think we've heard many, uh, staff members from the school that want those students, that want those areas. We've heard from a lot of parents, community members in those areas that want, um, to stay out, out in the country, just want to stay out with Four Corners. I think it's important that, again, like I said, it's the last country school that we have, and I think keeping those boundaries, keeping those sections out there at Four Corners, um, will also help sustain it in the future, at least for the immediate future. Um, and we'll continue with the growth out there at Four Corners. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick, stick to my guns and, and, uh, say that those two zones need to stay out at Four Corners regardless of what option we pick, one or three. Uh, in my opinion, option three also has the least amount of students being, being moved, uh, three twenty-nine to three eighty-three. Um, so that makes sense to me. Um, but I also want to hear about anybody else and any other areas that people want to discuss as far as whether it's Great Lakes or Northern Lights. Um, so that's just where I'm at right now. Just so everybody knows.
I'll piggyback off of that. Um, one of the, one of the big things I brought up last week was, I think, talking about the mental health and the support system of the kids leaving each of these elementary schools. And when you look at the three schools other than Lake Superior, they have, you know, a hundred and nine, a hundred and fourteen in option one, or a hundred and nine and sixty in option three, and that provides a lot of familiarity with the students who are moving. Um, if you move the thirteen or eight, depending what number it is, to Bryant, you know, they're all, I think Amy told us, I might be wrong, that they're all kind of separated in different classes. So you're going to be putting kids in, you know, first, second, third grade class without anyone that they, maybe anyone they recognize. They might know some students. Um, so to me, I feel like that's putting them, making them a little bit more vulnerable than they already are moving another school. So I also agree for more than just, you know, just that mental health, that support, um, keeping these kids at Four Corners. And as far as option one and option three, I also think, you know, the less students we can impact, you're under twenty-nine students and option three does look good. Um, but then we also start to consider, you know, where does that put our kids for capacity? Um, that's going to be affected by transfer ends as well. So kind of have to look at those numbers and consider those, anticipate those students or those families still requesting their kids to be transferred in to Cooper, um, to help that percentage get a little bit higher, but I a hundred and ten percent agree to keep the Four Corners kids at Four Corners.
Yeah, I guess, um, I agree, uh, with either option one or three. I think keeping, uh, that section at Four Corners is the right thing to do. Um, I think that those couple of kids that do attend Bryant, they can, uh, possibly reapply for the transfer and they've already been, um, providing transportation and things. So I think that that's reasonable for those families as well. Um, I, when the boundaries first came out, I think my initial response was option three because that is the least amount of kids impacted. And that was the number one priority of the community in the survey. Um, you know, as I've been digesting things and looking at things more, I do not want to do this again in the near future. Um, so option one, um, I think is really good for Cooper. Um, being that they're in a corner, that's really a hard place to, um, you know, try to divide up again if we did this again. Um, but then I look at option one, it's the most kids moved and Northern Lights actually drops. Um, they actually would be five less students than they currently are at, which does also concern me because we want their enrollment to stay up as well. So, you know, it's a trade-off, I guess. Um, I was looking a little bit, and I don't want anybody to be upset with me, um, but I have to propose something just to see. Um, option one, it's a matter of about fifty kid difference between Cooper and Northern Lights, if that makes sense. Try to, I guess, try to follow me. Um, if we looked at the map, I looked at the numbers, so N L zero one in option one has zero kids in it, so that could be moved back to the Northern Lights area. It's currently a Cooper, um, section on option one. N L zero two, which is right next to it, has twenty-three to twenty-eight kids, uh, twenty-eight with preschool and fifth graders, twenty-three without. So if we looked at moving that section back into the Northern Lights district, that gives them approximately twenty-five kids back, then Cooper would have twenty-five. Making the percentages about sixty-five, both of them would be almost sixty-five percent than capacity. Um, so again, giving Northern Lights a few more students, giving Cooper a couple less than they have in option one. Um, and again, still continuing to keep that Bryant section back in Four Corners. So again, I'm just proposing it. I'm really, option one and option three both have their pluses and minuses. Um, so I'm genuinely okay with either, but I figured then that would also only move three hundred and forty-seven total kids. So again, bringing the number of moved kids in option one down. But if it's not, you know, something to even discuss, then fine. And I did, I kind of asked, I sent it today to David C, and so I apologize for putting you on the spot there last minute, but I said, would that affect transportation or socioeconomic? I think because of the other moves, I don't think it would, um, but that's just me. You know.
About transportation, I'm not sure.
No transportation effect.
Or still.
So I don't know. I feel like Cooper needs to be utilized better, being it's our newest building. But then, like I said, Northern Lights is very small, well, not utilizing as much. So.
In the one.
Mm-hmm, in one. But then because of the proposition, then it would help get it back up to about sixty-five percent capacity by taking that one section back. And again, if it's too much movement, it's okay, but I figured I have to.
Which sections are those, one and two?
So if you look, it's going to be right here and here.
Can we point out on the map?
The top one has zero in it currently.
This one?
And I don't think, it looks like that's kind of the shipping. Yeah, it's not really, it's never going to have anything.
Two here.
Industrial, yeah.
Yep, two is right below it. Yep.
Does two have students in it, did you say?
It has twenty-eight, but that includes pre-K and fifth grade. It's about twenty-three if you just do K through four. Like I said, then that brings it to three hundred and forty-seven total kids moving versus the three eighty-three. And then it brings both Cooper and Northern Lights to about sixty-five percent each. One is, I think, sixty-five, one is sixty-four or something.
I think the only risk you run is the demographics.
Yep.
Change significantly with that group, but I don't.
Yep, yeah. And I did kind of look at the other maps according, yeah, it's hard to say exactly, but yeah.
You're trying to even those out between the two options?
A little bit more to, to make sure that they're both utilized because well, I think Cooper needs to be. It's the newest building. I worry the Northern Lights is really low and actually losing five for what they have now. So. Yeah.
And just to add out there, the community survey, I think number one was the tick, if I'm not mistaken.
It was.
It was.
So if you did that, if you, if you're looking just at one, right?
Yep.
Or are you looking at one in those numbers, how it would affect three? Because then wouldn't you have less kids to move in three as well?
But why, but Cooper isn't utilized? And are you saying for option three?
If you're, if you're moving twenty-five to Cooper, they're at sixty-one percent right now in, in three. If you move twenty-five more in to Cooper, that utilization goes up.
Mm-hmm. So you would.
Northern Lights, but.
So which section would you say in option three to move back?
Do you need to move back?
Yeah, because Cooper's not being utilized in an option three.
Correct.
There's way more students in option one going to Cooper.
Right. That's my bet. Yeah, the twenty-five wouldn't make a difference.
I'll say for me, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm in agreement on the Four Corners option, um, leaving it as it was before, so, and I'm not going to beat that drum any more than it already has been. So um, as far as the options go, between option one and three, you know, I'm wrestling with the same things, the, the utilization of Cooper. Um, I'm, and I'm really having a hard time justifying it at the number it is. And for me, just going into it, that was a that was a big deal. You know, I'm a, I'm a Cooper parent too as well, but you know, again, I, I go back to like, it, it does, it is scary moving a bunch of stuff around, numbers around again, you know, for, for pulling section to section. It does make sense what you're saying, Brooke, I think. Um, you know, I find it interesting that as far as the survey goes, you know, affecting the least amount of students was the number one thing, but option one was also the number one option, um, which doesn't do that. Um, you know, I think the most, the thing that I've heard most in the community, um, whether it's social media or just talking to people, it has been around Cooper. And, you know, why do we build that building, blah, 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 and, you know, for, for reasons unbeknownst to a lot of people, you know, that there's reasons behind it. Um, personally for me, that's, that's my option right now, option one for me, just because of, uh, getting Cooper to where it is. I don't really worry about Northern Lights as far as the capacity and utilizing that. That's the heart of the city. I think it's always going to be there. Those students will always be there. Um, so being at sixty percent or whatever, um, it's not, you know, I think, uh, as big a worry for me.
I agree with, I agree with Nick, um, both on the Four Corners. To option one issue. You see it utilized in four, and, um, Northern Lights is in a densely populated area and I don't, it's not going to change. And like Brooke said, Cooper's in a corner and it's hard to get students there. So I think your idea is intriguing. I feel like if we can flush that out a little bit, it'd be worthwhile to see what kind of impact that has on these other stats. All how quickly we can gather information.
Amy or Dave, is that tough ask what Brooke is asking?
I mean, it'd take us a minute to, to figure out what those numbers. I mean, Brooke did the numbers pretty well as far as here's the twenty-five kids that will move or twenty-nine kids. Um, as far as the socioeconomic, I don't think that's something we could throw together really fast. Yeah, I know that's a, it's not a high value area. It's pretty industrial over there, so it's not going to be, um, not, not many homes of high value.
Casey's pulling some of that data, but I guess I want to be a little cautious too about throwing out a lot of
Yeah.
graphic data.
Sure.
Relation to, it's all in the sense.
So I, I think between one and three, our question is aside from hammering all the other details, is do we care more for Cooper's percentage to be more utilized, or do we care more for less students to be? That sounds bad. We can care for both.
Right, thank you.
But, but that's the difference between one and three.
Yeah. And I, I, I gave my opinion, uh, option one for that reason, for the utilization.
I just, I think that I don't want to be in this situation again, and I do agree with you, Nick, that the Northern Lights area is densely populated. I think it's going to always have kids. Cooper, i- it's just, I don't know. And Ed, if I mean, this would make somewhat of a compromise then because it's only thirty more kids that are moved in option one than option three if we do this.
Do it. And, and you're right, we don't, we don't want to be back at the table. It's been very, uh, clear from the beginning. This is a long-term plan. We can't, we can't predict where our shifts in population are going to be, or going to be, should, gonna, going to be, um, you know, we, we would hope that students that have left the district come back to the district. And, and I could get on my horse on, on that, but I won't this evening. But we certainly have, that's one of the best staffs in the state. Um, transportation doesn't seem to be an issue at all with, with this. Um, I, I would be remiss for not bringing up something that's been on my notes for last couple of meetings. Um, although I said something about it last week, the Great Lakes situation is the toughest situation as far as I'm concerned. And, um, even though we're acknowledging that, it's not going to make it any easier for these, these, um, people that have to move. But I'm certainly hoping they all stay in our district. Um, we do, where's Pat? Pat, could you help a minute on a, on a bus situation perhaps in the morning?
You can look at it, again, as you said, it would be morning only, but adding what we like called park stops, and that is just an idea where the students can go and congregate in the park, where we can bring them into Great Lakes there, that would reduce the amount of, from Nicole will be to a mile or less, uh, versus of the two mile.
Have we done that before?
We did institute it, uh, last year, uh, for a little bit, it was heavily utilized, but we do a lot with, uh, Northern Lights.
Can you share that just in case somebody's watching online and they couldn't hear him?
Yeah, so there's, there's a, there's talk about, and, and which we have done in the past, an option of having a bus pick up
Central Park.
Central Park area students that would be moving to the Northern Lights, um, school next year. But it would only be an AM route and not a PM route. So that, you know, that, does it make things better? I, I certainly hope so. I hope, because the safety issue has been the biggest thing out of the Great Lakes people, you know, and, and, and everything that we saw, we didn't get many emails from them, but they were the largest group of people that responded to the survey, and, and that was really their, their number one thing, safety. Perhaps there is other issues, but.
I did want to take a second too, before I forget, and thank the, uh, Four Corners, that Bryant section, Four Corners area for sending their emails as well. It's important that we hear from that community, um, that's being affected by that. So I appreciate it.
For the busing, what would the cutoff be? How would the, for students who wanted to go to Central Park, how would that be?
Show up, you'll give a ride.
Okay. Cause there's a hundred and nine students.
Well, maybe more.
Right, yeah, I'm just thinking, I don't, who knows how much it will be utilized, but just wondering if they'll, if that will just be for all students.
Right, they always see the most part of the Northern Lights. I think the most we have is a fifteen, one of the stops.
Okay, thank you.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Cooperative Strategies is watching our meeting.
Oh.
Brought us a new demographic based on what you're talking about.
Hey, guys.
You can see us, can we wave?
Want me to share?
Please.
Is it okay to do that, like you said? Okay, is it?
I think so.
It's a whole, it's as a whole.
It's a whole.
Not just one area, it's a whole.
Yeah. So I'm looking down here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the utilization at Cooper would be sixty-six percent, the utilization at Northern Lights would be sixty-four percent. S E S at Cooper would be forty-eight percent, S E S at Northern Lights would be fifty percent. And Four Corners, they've also figured that in as well?
That's what the Four Corners change, yeah.
With the Four Corners change, we're at ninety-one percent capacity. Um, and their S E S, uh, goes down to twenty-two percent. So they'll, they're continuing to be very low.
They are.
Um, and disability category is minimally changed as well. So.
Amy, can you read the utilization really quick up? Sorry.
And this, what, what changes you just described would put Northern Lights at sixty-four percent and Cooper at sixty-six percent percent and Four Corners at ninety-one percent.
But even if, and we know that for, Four Corners, how many kids were a half a percent? What was it again?
Every kid's a half, every kid's.
Every kid. And so if those four
The challenge.
Continue to do the transfer.
One section impacts class size pretty quickly, right?
Yep.
And there's, we need a large number of students to be able to justify an additional section. So I think it's important to know that this would not warrant an additional section of classes, um, with this change. It doesn't also.
It wouldn't mean that there will be two sections per grade. Yep. And that changes every year.
Yeah, and that changes based on the grade, but
And I.
This change, it wouldn't warrant additional sections.
Right.
It had the same sections they have this year.
Did that also change Bryant's utilization? Uh, it went down a little bit, which it was at the seventy-nine percent. What did I have? Oh, I figured.
Oh, Bryant goes from seventy, seventy-three percent utilization to seventy, is that right?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-six percent.
Seventy.
They were at seventy-nine, so.
That's for options.
Yeah.
She.
Option one.
They would go to seventy-six.
Which is again closer to Great Lakes, closer, it's all more, a little more balanced, but I don't know.
You guys are discussing the Four Corners, it's just also, the Four Corners, you gotta decide, are you going to do it as a grandfather, all the kids in, or?
Is it permanent?
Or the permanent sections, so. I guess I would advocate for just keeping that as a Four Corner section.
I agree. Making sure that rural school stays open.
Yeah.
I agree.
With your tweet, I proposed option one, the utilization is more even out and it's Four Corners, and the SES is the same. It doesn't look like there's a big impact anywhere else.
That's good.
And giving Cooper more students.
Cooper more students, less kids moved.
So that puts us at how many, so is that three?
Three fifty-eight would be for Cooper, and then Northern Lights would be about four eighty-nine-ish. Again, that's transfer in pre-K, fifth graders, what are we including? So that's rough, but.
I mean, the students moving, that would reduce, like twenty, was that twenty-four or twenty?
Twenty-eight was with pre-K and fifth grade, twenty-three was without pre-K and fifth grade.
But we have to say twenty-eight, I think, right?
I, I don't know that they included pre-K, right? In our numbers, but they included fifth.
Yeah, so what, what was it?
So it would be twenty-four, because there was only one fifth grader.
Yeah, the numbers we're looking at are next year's K through four. It's live.
So let me get this straight, Brooke, you're proposing option one. Keeping the Darryl Road sections in Four Corners. And taking NL sections one and two and keeping them NL sections one, right?
Keeping them in the Northern Lights district, yes.
Does that make sense to everybody else?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's where we got these numbers.
Again, my primary reason is keeping Northern Lights with a little bit more utilization.
Cooper.
And then Cooper, obviously, but that.
Students in option three.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I think we're limited in what we can do to help, like, to meet the requests, to meet the needs or desires, I guess, of the staff, of the the families. And I think just by the simple calculation of this, this is doable. And it gets us closer to where we want to be. It's kind of just like that happy medium. That's like the pros and cons between option one and option three. There's going to be big changes at all the schools in this.
Yeah, I can, but is there any more discussion? I can make a motion, but.
I think I'm pretty fast, I guess.
All right.
Right.
I make a motion for option one, leaving that Bryant area in the Four Corners area. All right, Four Corner, or FC zero-one, FC zero-six to stay in the Four Corners area. And then Northern Lights, NL zero-one and NL zero-two to stay in the Northern Lights district.
There's a motion and a second to accept option one with the following, FC zero-one, FC zero-six to stay in the Four Corners L zero-one, L zero-two to be moved to the Northern Lights district boundaries. Is there any further discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
I truly believe we are doing the best that we can. We have been provided, again, with a a large amount of information. This is not an easy task. And I know each and every one of you have been worried about this for quite some time. But as we move forward, we move forward united. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, excuse me, roll call vote.
Brooke Taylor.
Hi.
Nick Olson.
Hi.
I'm an I. Nick Schumacher.
Hi.
Diana Smith.
Hi.
President Olson.
Yes. With that, I officially adjourn this meeting and thank you very much for being here.